Okay, it is 2:30 and we are ready to start the study session. So Ms. Pack, you gonna lead us?
I don't know if Mike has anything to?
One quick introductory remark, and that is that Sino Media Connection is covering and broadcasting our meeting. They are also covering and broadcasting the candidate forum that starts at 6:00 at the Chamber Annex. And so they have some need for setup, and so if we can be mindful of 5:00 or shortly thereafter, that'll help them transition from us to the candidate forum. Beyond that, it's been 48 hours since we met last. Debbie's done quite a bit in the meantime, and we're trying to bring you issues and options with the intent of walking you through each one of them. Tara is gonna take some notes, and we've got some math we'll do on the fly and share with you as we get through some of these decisions possibly. And then ultimately, we'll factor your direction into bringing you a draft budget for future consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to Debbie.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just a couple of housekeeping things. I apologize you didn't get this until today, but I literally just printed it at 1:00. So you have two sets of documents, I just want to let you know. The first one is just the outline of what we're going to be going over and the decisions that we're requesting that you give us direction on. The second packet that's attached is some supporting documentation to those decisions. So some of the information that we've probably given you before that we felt would be helpful as you go through these decisions that you might want to just reference back to. I know one thing that we talked about the other day, too, was a complete list of the comprehensive fee schedule, which is also in that second packet. So with that, we'll just go ahead and get started. As you know, each year as we present the budget, we come back to you, kind of after we've done all the discussions and things like that, to basically get your guidance on where you want us to go with the budget on these particular items, because they are decision points that we believe you need to give us direction on. So the first one is agency contracts, which is the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. As you know, we've had a longstanding agreement with the Salina Chamber to provide tourism and promotion for the city of Salina. And part of their funding from us is from the transient guest tax. Currently, we issue a 6.7% transient guest tax, and they receive 3.7 cents out of that 6.7. The revenue estimate for 2020, I have $1.4 million. Obviously, with COVID, that number probably won't be that large. The 2021 estimate is $1.9 million. And as we've discussed before, we're kind of going back to the 2018 or 2019 numbers, because we really don't know where things are going. For the city side of this particular item, it's a pass-through. So whatever we budget as revenue and expenditure is really, I don't want to say it's inconsequential, but it is, it's whatever we get in, we're passing out, other than the numbers that go to TPEC. So I always try to budget this on the high side, because that way we don't have to come back if revenues do go higher than expected and do a budget amendment. So for 2021, our expected budget is about $1.9 million. Of that, visits Salina would get $848,832. The cultural arts or CARM fund would get about $142, and the Oakdale/Kenwood Park marketing would get about $57,000. Also out of that, we support Tony's Pizza Event Center operations at about $566,000. And the Tony's Pizza Event Center capital bond issuance of about $283,000. I've provided the history of the funding for this particular fund. You can see there's some years that are really good, some years are really low. The last few years have been fairly consistent, so we're hoping that we can kind of ride on that. The option for this, for us to get your consensus, I don't think we do a motion, we just get a consensus.
Yeah, if we can get consensus from you, we'll bring back a budget that reflects all that for your action.
Is to budget as we've estimated, take other actions, or instruct staff to work with CVB to review and report back on the cultural marketing program and funding. We've had that conversation before, and we just wanted to leave that out there as an option for you, if that's something you want us to look into after the budget cycle and do a little bit more research on.
If I could add just a little bit, as Ms. Pack described, those distributions are spelled out in an agreement between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. That agreement runs, the term of that agreement runs to the end of the calendar year, and it automatically renews unless one of the parties takes action. So the percentage allocations or the distribution of the visits Salina funding and the cultural arts marketing and Oakdale marketing is spelled out by that agreement. Sylvia Rice, on behalf of CVB, and I've had conversations on, you know, off and on basis about there might be some merit in, at some point, going back and looking at the cultural arts grant component, and it is getting used quite a bit, and we could do that as part of the agreement renewal, if that's something of interest.
Under the cultural marketing number, is all that used every year, or is there a balance left in that?
Actually, there is a balance. The way that the guidelines are currently written, it allows for a balance. Initially, that was written so that at least four agencies could apply, but historically, we've only had three agencies apply. And so there is continuously a carryover, which can then go into the next year's funding, but we're always a little hesitant to do all of that, because we're also estimating of what will come in. So yes, there is. Don't ask me how much is there, because I cannot tell you as I stand here.
Does it take two or more of them to request funding? Or can just one? Does it take two or more of those four agents, or just one can request it?
Just one can request.
Okay.
They can only, at this point in the guidelines, they can only request up to 25% of what we think will be available to them in the year, and they have to match it one-to-one.
Okay.
Isn't there some encouragement to try to pair up events, though?
Yes.
That may be what?
That's what I think I was thinking, we were always trying to get.
There are two funds. One is a, which we call Fund One. Not my proudest moment, but we call it Fund One, and that really supports the creation of a full-year marketing plan. These are the events we're going to co-produce. Let you do this for spring break week, and we'll do this, and we'll put them together and market them, that kind of thing. And then additionally, the encouragement is there for them to try to pick up and say, not just, hey, hey, we're doing this, but also, hey, make it a weekend, hey, spend the night. While you're here, we also have museums and art centers and cinema, et cetera. And then they can also partner with hotels and restaurants if they wish to do that. That's Fund One. Fund Two is much more a specific event kind of thing, and most often, the participant we've had request those funds, most often, has been Salina Symphony. And if she's got an event, because she's often on a weekend, she'll look and see what the zoo might be doing, and it, the amount they can apply for there is much smaller. I think the maximum is 3,000, but they, per event, but they only have to match it $1 to $2. So it gives them a $4,500, and it all has to be directed at regional marketing that will encourage overnight visitation. That's my CARM elevator speech.
When you say 25% is the max they can apply for, I presume that's each agency?
Yes.
So if you don't get all four agencies applying, you always have that quarter left over. So has that balance been building over the years?
To some degree. We try to-
Or do you go back and look at the total you have and say, 25% of this, so you get, eventually you eat into that?
There's been some increase every year. And we, as I said, when we do that budget, we try to take that into consideration. We know we've got this in reserves, let's go ahead and say it's this much. Some of the conversation we've had has been to take a look at that and see if it makes sense to continue to have a set of guidelines that's going to generate a carryover every single year.
And I should remember this, but I'm afraid to say I don't.
You were there, Rob.
I'm curious about Oakdale/Kenwood Park marketing. I mean, they're parks, you know, how do you market a park?
Well, actually, that is geographic connotation. We do regional marketing at what I term the assets. So we might do some River Festival marketing out of that fund, we might do, we've done Kenwood Cove billboards, we market events at TPEC, that kind of thing. The car show, things that happen in the Kenwood/Oakdale area.
Things that are happening there, not necessarily-
Yeah. Might be things happening.
Hey, come see this nice park.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, no. Okay?
Thank you.
I don't have a question for Sylvia, but I have one just, and we may have discussed this before, I'm sorry, sometimes the financial stuff sort of starts to run together after a while, but given that we'll probably see a decline in the transient guest tax, do we have any sense of how much we're going to need to make up in the Tony's Pizza Event Center for their operating fund that they're accustomed to having? Because I know that usually runs about, what, 500, 550? And if we only bring in, like, 200, where?
Yeah, we-
And I know they've tried to staff down and do some other things to be aware of that, but in the event of a big gap?
Well, that's the extent of what we know at this point. We do have a financial obligation to cover any shortfall. They have made best efforts to try to manage their expenses to, you know, kind of the COVID scenario, but this year, like any other year, we see how performance plays out at the end of the year, and then we fund the difference.
And I think you had requested, asked a similar question, or somebody did ask a similar question, and I have not had an opportunity to go back and look at when they presented back in April to explain what they were doing. I'm not sure if they provided numbers at that point. I made a note, I can certainly reach out to them and see if they have revised budget numbers. I know they're short-staffed, too, because they've got people laid off or furloughed. So I will try to reach out to them and get that information.
So if we're going to get a big surprise, excuse me, it'd be nice to know.
Did I ask this last week, or maybe it's Monday? Did they, were they able to apply for PPP?
You asked that, and I honestly don't know that answer.
Yeah, because I guess to follow up on Commissioner Hodges' question, it concerns me that we said, well, we'll be their backstop, but yet we don't have any control over whether they applied for PPP, whether they've gone to work share like we have for a load. So yeah, that'd be something we ought to-
But I do know they've furloughed and laid off, but I don't know about PPP.
So, but anyway, okay.
So then, if we could get a consensus on your desire for that particular item?
Any? I presume that as money does not come in as slated here, and it probably will not. I mean, I don't know what the current state of the industry is, but I know for a couple of months, the lodging industry was in dire straits. So I don't really expect us to get anywhere near this amount of money. I presume everything gets cut back proportionately?
Yes.
It's all percentage-wise.
It's all percentage-wise, and Sylvia and I have this conversation all the time. What she budgets as revenue is never the same as what I budget as an expenditure, because she has to have the revenue to support her operation, and I'm just budgeting a pass-through. So if we looked at her budget, it's going to be significantly lower than what we're budgeting in that fund.
And if it's helpful, I can assure you that Sylvia made it clear, and I reinforced to the Chamber Board, it is a pass-through. And whatever actual performance is, is what they'll receive, and they're very, they're proactive, they're very mindful of paying attention to what the future might bring for them.
Okay. Is everybody okay with the breakout? Okay, I think we have consensus.
Okay, thank you. The second item that we'll talk about is Salina Downtown, Inc. As we mentioned Monday, Penny is sick at home, she's still quarantined, so she wasn't available. I think she said she was going to be watching online, so if we needed to ask her any specific questions, we can email her and see if she can respond. I provided in the first part of this slide is the Economic Development Fund, because this is where the Salina Downtown, Inc. funding comes from. The current ending fund balance, I don't know what happened to my years here, 2019 was $708,500. With the unknowns of COVID, I will mention that the SEEDO did reduce their 2020 request by 10% based on our request from them due to COVID. So our expenditure should be a little bit less than what we've budgeted there. The Save-A-Lot money is an in and an out, so that really won't affect that number. And we have already provided to SDI the request that they asked for last year, which I believe was 95,000. So as you can see, we would anticipate that this fund have a fund balance at the end of 2021 of $600, roughly $1,000, and we are spending more than what we're typically getting in here. The source of this funding is sales tax, and it's at a 3.9% amount. So whatever goes into the sales tax capital out of our special sales tax, automatically 3.9% of that goes into this fund. And that was a decision that was made at the city commission level, at what level to fund that. We do have some pending requests. We have SDI's request of facade for 47,500 and a supplement request for 45,000. We did have the Daycare Coalition that came in last fall that were requesting 100,000. And as Commissioner Hodges mentioned Monday, there are some economic development project prospects that we do not know what those dollar amounts are. We would anticipate that those could possibly come out of here, or depending on if those were street projects or something like that, we may have some alternative funding for those. So basically, SDI did reduce their request this year by 5%. So their request for supplement is 42,750. Their request for facade is 47,500, for a total of $90,250. In the supplement that I provided you, the other question that came up Monday was, where is the downtown CID? Where's the funding on that? As we explained Monday, and that's in the supporting documentation on a spreadsheet that looks similar to this, number two, we talked about that Monday. The first $200,000 of that collection goes to the master developer. That has not been met. We've collected through the end of June approximately $166,000. So once that becomes, we reach that $200,000, we'll begin to give some of that money to SDI for downtown maintenance. Old Chicago will get a portion of it, Burillo will get a portion of it, and the rest of that funding will go into those other pots of money that are set aside for that CID. So our options for this one is to authorize the 2021 funding as requested by SDI, authorize the funding for the supplement only, assuming that the facade money could come out of the SID money, the CID money, I mean. Authorize 2021 funding in amounts other than requested. The other thing that they did, they are doing this year is they are not recommending a fee increase for their downtown district partners. So we would ask that you affirm that, and then, or take any other action that you may feel like is necessary. Are there any questions on that one?
This may be a question for Mr. Scrag, but last week we were, or Monday, I keep thinking it was last week, Monday, we were talking about SDI will start receiving funds because of the downtown development. When does that, when does that begin? And is there an earmark for how those funds are to be used?
Yes, there, as part of the downtown redevelopment, there was a development agreement and a supplemental agreement that spelled out a number of funds and uses of star bond proceeds, of tax increment financing proceeds, and community improvement district proceeds. And they, those agreements go into great detail, to the extent that Ms. Pack was describing, and then there's also new retail funding and existing retail funding. So there's a provision in the agreement for downtown programming, maintenance, and security, and the agreement spells out that the intention is for that to be with SDI. So there's an opportunity there, and we need, we're nearing finalization of a transfer agreement to enter into with SDI. That funding would kick in at the point that that 200,000 that Ms. Pack was referring to is satisfied with the master developer. So that, that'll fund them annually for their, as long as that transfer agreement is in effect. And in addition to that, there's the funding that I was referring to for existing and new retail. That is more in the form of a grant process through the master developer in the city on a project-by-project basis, and a transfer agreement would be required for each one of those. So-
So what SDI will receive will be based on how much income, how much sales tax we're receiving over, and we don't really know.
They'll get a little over 40% of that, 1% sales tax, that's in addition downtown, they'll get 40% of that, about 40% of that.
That is for their maintenance, security, and so on.
And programming, yes.
And programming. That does not include the existing and new retail supplements.
Correct.
And that part is not going to go through SDI?
Correct. It would go through the master developer in the city.
Okay, so potentially, we could have an SDI program for facades and two other programs for existing and new retailers operating at the same time.
Correct. And the existing and new retailers doesn't preclude facades by any means, but it does presume the possibility of a much more extensive renovation of a space.
Yeah, and I don't think, 21, I don't think we have the luxury of expecting those dollars maybe, but I think as we get into 2022, there's a chance that we could lean on those dollars instead of some of these dollars coming out. Would that be a-
Correct.
Would that be an assumption that we could make?
Yes. In fact, part of the reason we're bringing it up is, you know, we don't know exactly what 2021's performance will be, but we could take that approach in 2021. One other provision that's spelled out in great detail in the development agreement is each one of those transfer agreements acknowledges the fact that it's subject to financial performance and funds being available. They're all basically pay-as-you-go. And so there's a priority system that's created, and there's an annual allocation that's estimated, but we have to actually see the financial performance before there's an obligation to pay that out.
So based on the $166,000 we have received to date, we should be able to project a date that we're going to hit the 200,000, and at that point, the money would start being divided among all the parties. So we should be able to come up with a ballpark number of what to expect in 2021 for each of those three items.
But for the impacts of COVID, yes.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're going to have to make some assumptions about projecting the sales tax.
But I guess to follow up on Commissioner Franz, we will receive funds, SDI will, in 2021.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
From that, so.
So if it helps at all, and this is all based on the original projections, and these numbers are over the life of the Starbahn project, but the CID was estimated to generate essentially $7.6 million. 40.6% of that was to go to, for maintenance, security, and programming presumed to be SDI, so $2.8 million over the life of the project. 1% was to go to Old Chicago, which was $50,000. 39.5% was to be set aside for new retail improvements, and that was, I don't have a dollar estimate in my PowerPoint, and then 18.9% was set aside for existing retail improvements. That's all out of the CID. Then out of tax increment financing, there was a new business TIF fund that was half of all the TIF proceeds, estimated at $4.9 million. So half of 4.9 million was also earmarked for new businesses.
So the question is, how much of that do we expect in 2021? What would be reasonable? And, you know, my inclination at the moment is to take option two here and hold the facade money, not necessarily say no to the facade money, but simply place a provision before we do that, before we distribute that, we take another look at this in early 2021 or whenever that time comes, so we have a bit of more of an idea of what other funds they might have available to perform those programs, or that we might have available.
Just doing some of my math, which is always suspect, it looks like the 10 months here listed for roughly $166,000 means that we're, I'm assuming, generating about $16,000 a month in tax-
Yes, it's just like sales tax, it goes up, it goes down. But I will say that the June sales tax, which was April sales, was almost $14,000, which is not that much lower than what the prior months would have been.
Well, and just looking in terms of, if we estimated $10,000 a month, that would look like SDI earning somewhere around $48,000 a year. And then if we assumed $16,000 a month, that's looking more like $76,800. So, I mean, I feel like we're getting awfully close on getting that master developer-
Yes.
-paid off. So, I mean, I don't have a problem if we want to leave some seed money to help get them through the transition, but I don't know about, you know, funding it at full, because I feel like we're right there. But that is also understanding that that's not obviously coming all in at once. So in January, you might only have $10,000 in that fund and not know whether or not you would want to disperse that all to one applicant, so.
Yes.
I think what makes us a little bit confusing is the money that's going directly to SDI is programming, maintenance, and security. The money that is going for downtown improvements is going to travel a different route than the facade funding would. And I'm just concerned about getting two different programs, actually, three different programs for those improvements, and trying to coordinate that between SDI and the master developer in the city. It all sounds very confusing. And I'm all for, what was the term I heard? Lawrence called it a placeholder budget. I'm all for holding a place for that 47,500, but let's, you know, make a provision that that would not get distributed unless we, until we have a chance to look at it, you know, next February or sometime, and we have a little better idea about what's happening.
I like that idea. The downtown maintenance at 40%, technically, that would not be earmarked, or not earmarked, but that would not be designed to be used for facades. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's only the TIF, well, the new business money, which is, well, actually, it could be new or existing, depending who wanted to redo their facade.
Correct.
So it's just another step down the ladder. But now, with the April sales receipts, is, well, the June payment, but for the April sales, are you comfortable that most of that money was actually earned in April, or is some of that money that was still straggling in from before we shut down?
It could have been, because as we've spoke about before, every retailer submits their sales tax at different times depending on what their liability is. So I do not know if that is some old money coming in, or if that's all current dollars. I honestly don't know that answer.
Now, the amount that's slated for programming, maintenance, and security, could that fit into the, what we've been paying in as a supplement each year, that 42,750?
I guess technically, yes, it could. I think the assumption has been that added funding for maintenance, security, and programming was for new programming, not to replace what was already underway. But there hasn't been a lot of definitive conversation about that either way, so I think we would have some discretion.
The more we talk about this, the more I find myself agreeing with Commissioner Franz. This is a pretty complex thing that we've got with a lot of, you know, with three different entities and a lot of moving parts with this. I'd be fine revisiting this in February, if that's the suggestion.
Another procedural question. On the CID funds, the sales tax proceeds, do we as a city have any input or say or view of how those are being used?
So which, the, for the programming?
For the development agreement.
Through the transfer agreement, there'll be a provision for an annual budget and seminal, and programming seminal.
So will that be incorporated with the SDI's annual budget? That would make sense to me.
Yeah, I don't recall the timing of that seminal in the transfer agreement, but yes, we could do that. The transfer agreement calls for, well, the transfer agreement presumes SDI first, and it is built that, you know, we, if we're not satisfied, we don't have to renew that transfer agreement. So there is an annual- So there is an annual submission, review and approval process.
Are these some of the things that would be spelled out in our transferee agreement with Salina Downtown?
Quite a bit will, but when you say, more specifically, what are you?
Just in terms of what exactly, you know, this fund is going to be used for versus the new retail or the existing retail, so that, because right now, I'm just, yeah.
I completely understand the confusion. SDI's got basically three things going on. They've got the supplement that we're providing them, that 42,750. They currently have the facade program, and they would have a transferee agreement for maintenance, security and programming. So that's the SDI role. The other funding that I'm talking about is all standalone from SDI by way of the development agreement.
The master developer in the city.
Right.
So there'd be a different person or agency deciding if that money could be used for a facade? It wouldn't be SDI controlling that money?
Right, it would be the master developer and the city signing off.
And I guess I should say too, it's a competitive process. I mean, it could be one existing retailer that just wants to do facade improvements. It could be another existing retailer that wants to do something much more grand at a higher expense, and they'll find themselves, you know, competitively competing for the available funds.
I like the idea of the, what was the term you used, Commissioner Franz?
Placeholder.
Thank you. Placeholder. Because, you know, we don't know what the funding is going to be like, and this is, you know, downtown is a temporary situation for us, the CID. I mean, at some point, unless SDI generates enough money to carry its whole budget, I mean, every year, we'd probably be looking at the same request. But if, and if their earnings go way up, then certainly we can use the money elsewhere.
So just so I'm clear, you're proposing a placeholder for the facade portion of the, and as the supplement?
Yeah, that was my initial suggestion, yes.
And go ahead and proceed with the operating supplement.
Yeah, I think so, at this point, and then we can revisit the whole issue next year. I want to make sure that they're in a hold harmless position with respect to that facade program in the event revenues do not come through, or something else transpires between now and then.
So the next outside agency request is for OCCK. I did provide some documentation for this one in the support documentation, their request, and also a breakdown of the 2020 and the 2021 request, and how that different, there's differences there. Because as we looked at this, as we know, OCCK has funded 75%, or 70% from KDOT, 30% from city support. In 2020, due to COVID, KDOT came in and said, we're going to provide 100% support through June of 2021. So that enabled OCCK to request less to the city of Salina. The number that we did want to look at and point out is that in 2020, we approved for their operating $776,390, plus a capital replacement of $35,300, which was a total of 8,1690. In the 2021 budget, the request is for $439,663 in operating and $35,500 in capital replacement. And when we did the numbers, half of their funding budget for 2020 would be about $388,195. So that request is going up based on the half of the, the half year that we would be supporting. And that's why I wanted to provide the detail to the two budgets, so that you can kind of see where those pluses and minuses were coming from. It appears that a lot of those are anticipated shortfalls in revenue from different sources or providing, or sources of funding for them. As we know, we are all pretty familiar with OCCK, and they provide our routes and our paratransit. And all this funding does come from the general fund. In the draft that we provided earlier in the week, we did include the total request of 475,163. So the options we would bring to you is to authorize the requested amount of 475,163, keep the funding at the 2020 operating budget level of $388,195, plus the $35,000 for capital, take other action as you might wish, or direct, and also, we've heard a lot of questions about, how do we know the money's being spent in Salina, when we have other routes in other cities, and they're picking up other things? So one of the options we wanted to give you was to, for you to direct staff to work with OCCK to provide a more detailed accounting for services provided in the city of Salina.
And that's a standalone item above and beyond budget direction, and would be something we pursue once we get through the budget process.
So half of the annual budget, or based on last year, would be the 388. Any question, any discussion about that? So, I was trying to get my calculator out here.
Pat's here from OCCK if you have questions, so.
I guess I may put Pat on the spot. We're kind of speculating a little bit of our understanding of the numbers. Can you shed any light, Pat? We're kind of trying to discern from your numbers, the conclusion that we reached. I wanted to give you the opportunity to shed any light on it.
Sure. Debbie's amount is correct, the 388, and plus the 35,3. What KDOT, KDOT doesn't fund 100% of our operation. Some of the operating overhead, the building repairs, maintenance, electricity, power lights, all that is not funded by KDOT. So we've added, actually, if you look at our request, it's a little bit less. If you combine what we're asking this year compared to what if we had made it 2021, it's a little bit less. We are asking in top of the three, on top of the 388,000, roughly 55,000 for the six month period, where, for the whole year, that covers part of, part of the overhead expenses that KDOT does not provide. Again, they provide operating dollars for the services. They don't provide any support money for any of our, of any of our structures, or any of our facilities, or any of our overhead expenses. We do not figure within, yes, we do cover a lot of state, we do provide a lot of different services. The budget that we present to the city's line does not include any expenses for the 81 connection, does not include any expenses to the prayer operations outside, outside of Salina. If you have a copy of our, of our application, you will see that we do deduct money, the Salina Regional Health Center Foundation gives the 70,000, we deduct that, we deduct some small county mill levy that we get because of the 81 connection. So some of those, some of those dollars are taken into account when we propose our budget. So again, the 388 is right, that would be half, plus the 35,3 for the capital, but we are asking, because of increases, additional 55,000 to cover some of the overhead items.
When did KDOT start picking up 100% of that for you?
April of this year.
So I guess my concern is, starting April, they've been paying 100%, but you're still getting the funds from us as if we were funding all of 2020.
No, they've dialed that back.
Have we dialed that back? That's my question. So from what we're, from what we budgeted last year, we're not?
Correct. We have a revised number for 2020, correct?
We're going to get, yeah.
Okay, we get a credit for what, because they're being 100% funded, okay.
The last time I met with you, unfortunately, I kind of mixed 2021 in with the 2020. I proposed, I think, over $300,000 credit back to the city for fiscal year 20. Again, I put a caveat on that, I would like to talk this, the increase for the building. I'd like to maybe the commission approve some of that credit going back to the increased costs of the brand new, or the addition to our transportation facility. I don't have those amounts yet, but that's something that we can discuss later. But there will be a credit for fiscal year 20, yes.
Questions?
Kind of appreciate having a credit, really like that. Guess I'm wondering, in 2022, what kind of an increase I'm going to see if we move up this operating budget to 2021? I mean, there's some percentage factor in there. I was unhappy when I saw a 13% increase in the budget in a given year. I want to see those held to more normal numbers, like we expect of our own departments here, 2% and 3% and 4% a year. We allow the extras here, and you just roll your budget forward. Where are we going to be in 2022?
Well, I, we've been kind of keeping it under, under the 5% increase. This year is not, if only if you take, it's a 13% increase if you take half and add back in some, in some of the overhead. So it's not, it's really less than what the 2020 budget is. Our plan, we look at the development of the public transportation within Salina. Obviously, we're going to have to deal with increased costs, we're going to have to deal with increased overhead. Our long-term plan is, because we can't compete wage-wise with other companies, our starting wage now is $12 an hour, the fast food restaurants, the Walmarts and the Targets of the world, which is about the few, one of the few left anymore, are starting at $13 and higher. Our plan is to try to instigate within the three-year plan to get our starting wage from 12, as it is now, to 13, 14, 15. So I don't think there would be any major increases to our budget request, other than increase for driver salary. Will overhead items continue to increase? Of course they will. The upkeep and maintenance upon our facility and our campus continue to grow. We bought, we just bought the old Myers Moving and Storage Building and a lot across the street from it. We're adding a 16,000 square foot addition to our existing building. All of that is going to increase certainly the overhead. But I think if I look forward, to look forward to maybe 2022, the only increase I think that we would propose, unless things just go nuts, would be increase the driver wages. Because we can't, for us to continue to provide public transportation, for us to continue to provide city Salina, Citygo and paratransit, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to compete with the wages everybody else is being paid. And right now, we're having a very difficult time hiring drivers because of that, because of the amount that we pay. So I don't see it, you know, we have, the transportation department's like 70-some employees, and counting mechanics and dispatchers and so on. 40-some of those are drivers, so if we add a dollar an hour to 40-some drivers, yes, that's going to, that's going to be an increase. So that is what the long-term plan, if we have a five-year plan, three-year plan, that plan would deal with getting driver salaries back to what, where we can be competitive.
So if it's helpful from a number standpoint, I think we've agreed that 388,000 is half of the budget, so that means the total budget's 776. The $55,000 overhead number represents 7.08% of that budget. If you have 40 employees getting a dollar an hour, that's $80,000 of added wage expense just for those 40 employees. So I didn't do the calculation of what $80,000 is, but probably approaching 10%.
I'm glad you're taking care of your employees.
I'm kind of concerned about the city's employees being at a fair wage rate. My overriding concern is that we have a capped, a cap on how much we can raise the mill levy, and we have a lot of competing concerns, so at some point, I, you know, I'm just concerned that transit service is going to be asking us for more than we can afford to give them, so I'm, maybe this is sort of a plea to keep things in line, because there's only so far we can go.
Right. And that's true. I have two entities that I have to deal with. KDOT also has to approve any increases. They're paying 70% of the service, so 70% of any wage increase, only 30% we would ask the city. Because again, 70% of the dollar is being paid, is being paid by KDOT. So that can minimize the amount, the amount that we're going to ask. What's unfortunate, well, I don't know if it's unfortunate, that's a bad term, is KDOT's fiscal year is not on the same, is not the same as the city's Salina fiscal year. In July, KDOT's fiscal year starts, and that runs through June. So in this year, it'd be July of '20 through June of '21. Cities, of course, is calendar year. So I have to kind of intermingle those two accounting periods or fiscal years to try to get it to match. I have to get KDOT's approval before I come to Salina to get, to get their approval. Again, a dollar sounds a lot, but 70% is coming, is coming, is coming from KDOT. Again, everything, as I said before, I'm repeating myself, everything is basically, the operations are basically covered by the FTA, KDOT. A lot of the overhead, a lot of the upkeep, a lot of the maintenance upon the facilities are not, everything else is, so. So I wish I could tell you what's going to happen in 2022, I don't know. If KDOT doesn't go along with the increase, obviously, I'm not going to be asking the city for it, because I couldn't, because I'd have to have the 70% from KDOT.
But that's a next year decision.
Yes.
And not to take the conversation in a different direction, but I think we talked on Monday that we're mindful that this is a one-time saving, so our staff's recommendation is, we need to budget for this to be a net positive at the end of the year, so that we've not absorbed it, and then we have to find it back in 2022.
Yeah, I was going to point that out. This year, it might drop to, you know, 475,000, but next year, it's going to be at, you know, 825,000 or 840,000, so we'd better, you know, prepare for that. I don't really expect KDOT will be this magnanimous two years in a row.
This is COVID-related, so, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think KDOT, and as well of our U, all of you understand the importance of public transportation. They know in tough times, especially with the pandemic we're going through now, people need affordable, dependable public transportation. And KDOT and FTA recognize that, and knowing they need to get the economy back and keep people moving, transportation is certainly a very, very vital part of that. So I was very, very happy and somewhat surprised when KDOT proposed 100% operation funding, especially for all, for all fiscal year 21, for the year we're in now, starting July 1, and the second half of fiscal year 20, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. Thank you, to all of you, and thank you for the support.
Bring it back to the commission for thoughts.
I'm fine funding it at the requested level this year, but I do share Commissioner Ryan's concerns, because we have seen exponential growth. I'm just, I'm not sure if this is the year that we cut back, given that vulnerable populations are going to be needing public transit more than ever, but I don't know that the increases that we've seen in the past are going to be sustainable with the city's budget. So I mean, I just, I'm a little concerned about that, but otherwise, I guess I'm okay keeping it at the requested level.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is a service that we don't have to have internally and provide 100% of the funding for. So, yeah, public transportation, I think, is something that always will get subsidized to some degree, just because it's a vital service. And, you know, one thing we have problems with is, you know, salaries for certain levels of employees, and I look at the salaries that you're paying the drivers, I mean, they must truly love what they're doing, because they've stuck with you. But I could see not having drivers being a big problem if the wages don't keep up, and that'd be a next year problem, but I could go along with the budgeting this year, but we do have to remember that it will be bigger.
Given all that said, I mean, I'm comfortable with option number one as well, but I just don't want to be in a position of trying to, having one organize, decide between, competition between one organization and the other, doing justice to both, so. So I can't put a bus service ahead of the city of Salina's needs, so.
Raise your hands.
I'm okay with option one.
And then is there any appetite to have a more detailed accounting for the services in Salina? Are you comfortable with, with the information that they're providing?
Yeah, I'm guessing it's tough because you have to get into cost accounting where you're looking at management and how much management's time goes into in-town services versus out-of-town. And I, I don't know, without looking at, I don't know, how they manage those numbers. It's always been a concern, I mean, we've always questioned that, is, you know, how many dollars are we subsidizing the route to Concordia or are we now subsidizing the Abilene? So I don't know how we, without, yeah.
Yes and no, but the economic impact favors Salina. Majority of the transportation we do, the Paratransit, the 81 connection, has, has an economic impact upon Salina. They are coming here, they're going to the, to medical clinics, they're shopping, they're going here. So yes, some degree, there could be some subsidy, but Salina's gaining by, by, by the amount of traffic and the amount of people we have coming to Salina to shop and, and, and do other things. So I, I think they offset. Could, I'm not a cost accountant, could I, could I dissect that? What is the cost to bring people from Concordia to here? But I wouldn't know how much the benefiting Salina by coming here. What is, what is the cost associated with them coming here, spending dollars here? And 90% of the ridership, maybe that's a little high, but 80 to 90% of the ridership we do outside of Salina, outside of Slane County, still affects Salina because that is where they are coming, whether or not it's medical, the hospital, shopping, or wherever, is still Salina benefits entirely from that. So I don't know if that answered your question, Mitch Hopper, but that's.
Yeah.
If we were to pursue that, I think it'd kind of be a two-step thing. As far as cost accounting, I think the interest I've heard from individual elected officials is more so that over that general overhead, how should it be allocated percentage-wise, the bulk of it to Salina, but proportionally to other locations? Once you get that accounting done, then we can have a conversation saying, recognizing that we've isolated the premium that's being paid, but it's worth paying the premium in return for the economic activity, or, you know, that's a policy decision for the governing body at that point. But that cost accounting would help quantify that, and it is a recurring question. I do get asked that quite a bit.
Understand, yeah.
So the 81 connection, does it, does it pick up there in the morning and come down here and then go back in the evening? How does that 81 connection work? Or do you have several routes?
It's three round trips a day. We try to make it passenger-friendly as possible. It goes from Belleville, Concordia, the 8124 junction, Minneapolis, Salina. And then an hour or so, or half hour later, it turns around and goes back. But in that same period of time, there's a bus going from Salina to Minneapolis to Concordia, to Belleville. And then the third route, it comes back, it comes back. So it's three, it's three complete loops, the three complete round, the round trips a day. And by far, the numbers favor Salina, where obviously that is where people are going to come for medical treatment, that this is where people are going to come to shop. Again, our, our budget does not include the operation, although Salina's benefiting, it does not include the operation of the 81 connection. What does it include? The new route we started from Salina, Abilene to Salina? Obviously, all those, the Salina, the Abilene route, all of that favors Salina because that's just people coming from Dixon County to, to Salina. That is pretty much funded by the city of Abilene and the hospital in Abilene, so that's, that's not part of our operating budget we're proposing to the city.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Again, thank you.
Are you comfortable with the direction, then?
For lack of direction, we might pursue that.
Okay. The next item on our issues is the Salina municipal band. This, this agreement, or whatever you want to call it, was established by a charter ordinance back in?
1973. I looked that up.
1873?
1973.
1973. It looks older than that, but. And, and it's a longstanding organization that provides performances here in the city of Salina, as well as at Smoky Hill River Festival. We have provided funding for them for many years. They are requesting again this year $20,000, which is what they had requested in prior years also.
Is their season still continuing this year because of COVID?
They are trying to put a season together. I don't know all the details, but we have had conversations about their ability to practice with the intent of performing at Oakdale compliant with social distancing and requirements.
And we also provide their practice space, their rehearsal space and storage space in Memorial Hall, correct?
Yep.
Now, the charter ordinance goes to the 1970s, but we've supported them since the 1920s. And they were actually formed, I believe, as a military band in the 1890s, if I remember my research, which I did long ago, not 1890's long ago, but long ago. I found some stuff that was actually fairly interesting.
If you've been over to their practice space, those uniforms are still in the closets over there to be, to be seen. They should probably be in the Smoky Hill Museum.
Probably wool.
They're wool, yeah.
Anyone have any objections to continuing?
Nope. Fine.
The next item we wanted to discuss was comprehensive fee schedule. We had several, a lot of discussion about this on Monday. And typically, and I did provide a copy of the entire comprehensive fee schedule and your supporting documentation, that shows you that most of the changes are either to round to a dollar amount or just a couple, 2 or 3% based on our annual CPI adjustments. The one numbers that we did not really look at, well, we probably did, but the sanitation fees, the recommendation is that curb and alley is going from $16.50 to $17 an hour, which is, or $17 a month, which is 3%. And the walk-in assistance is the same rate increase. For solid waste, staff is recommending that we have a change to the maximum amount of poundage from 540 to 500 pounds, and that cost goes from $36 to $40. And the commercial yard waste goes from $18 to $20. Asbestos goes from 72 to 80. Asbestos that's non-fiable, which I have no idea what all that means, but somebody does, goes from $36 to $40. And loads of rock and concrete and masonry go from $72 to $80, which are all 11.11% increases. As you know, we will not look at water and wastewater fees until after the summer session season. So we'll be coming back to you probably in October or November to look at those numbers. We do have several options as far as the comprehensive fee schedule. We typically adopt the comprehensive fee schedule with the budget in August. However, we often come back to you with amendments throughout the year. We always come back to you with an amendment with the water and wastewater rates. So we do have some options, which is to go ahead and direct us to prepare the resolution with the proposed modifications, or direct us to wait until we do the water and waste fees, where you might have a little bit more time to review and look at these fees. Or don't adopt a new comprehensive fee schedule, which would leave us at the same rates that we had last year.
And we had conversation on Monday about police report costs, and I can report a little bit more. There, I'm not sure, I think there might have been a little confusion in terms of the conversation that was going on. There, there is a accident report functionality that's available online, that a person can self-serve online and get an accident report. And we utilize crashdocs.org, which is affiliated with Carfax in some fashion. So there's an $8 fee for someone that wants to access the accident report online. Staff has already begun kind of looking at our peer communities and their fees and preparing fee comparison, both for accident reports and criminal reports. Criminal reports involve, almost exclusively involve some staff effort for redaction, to go through the reports and redact out names and information that is not public and can't be disclosed. So there's a review process for each one of the criminal reports that, that involve staff. And then the Attorney General's Office has circulated some draft language about Kansas Open Records Act fee limitations or guidance, and it's still in draft form, but we anticipate that that guidance will be coming, I don't know exactly when, but sometime in the near future, which is likely going to necessitate us going back and looking at our fees, not only for police reports, but our open records fees and things like that, to make sure we're in conformance with the guidance that comes out. So there'll be an opportunity somewhere in the near future to kind of have more information and make a more informed decision as it relates to report fees.
I will note that we are not proposing that any of these fees go into effect until January 1, so.
One question on what you were just talking about, I was going to ask. For the police reports, it's on bottom of page 23. Electronic photos includes media, $9 per media item. If a person gets, let's say, three photos and one DVD, is that then $18 or?
I think the presumption is the photos are going to be on the DVD, so that it would be a cassette, a DVD, I don't think it's intended to be printed picture.
Okay, so that $9 includes the first 15 minutes?
Yes, there's a footnote there with an asterisk that, that says that electronic media includes CDs, DVDs, VHS, cassette tapes, or like items. So I think it's trying to account for the cost of, you know, that media that we have to put it on to deliver it to them.
Right. So if it's 35 photos as opposed to one photo, it's still just the $9 if it's?
As long as it takes less than 15 minutes and one piece of media to put it on.
And that nine is proposed to go to 15?
Correct.
Correct.
You know, I, I guess I have some questions about the baseline police reports. Copy to report is $10. How many pages does that cover typically? Are those reports one page or five pages or 100 pages?
Right. And I don't know.
It doesn't stipulate a, a maximum.
The, the guideline has always been is that we can recover our cost, and if it's a one-page report, $10 does quite a bit more than that.
And all honesty, my suggestion would be that we wait till we have the guidance from the Attorney General's Office about open records fees in general, and we have a better understanding of how they apply to police reports. We can also have the police department provide more detail and we can address it all at that point.
And the other, the other item that I had a question on too was with animal services in terms of our upping the surrender fees and what effect, if any, that staff would have on animals being abandoned rather than surrendered to the shelter? So if we're going to?
I, I have the same concern. I mean, $10 doesn't sound like, like much, but if I, I'm concerned about animals not being properly, I don't know what the word is, I don't want to say disposed of, but properly, you know, surrendered. You know, I'd rather have them go to the shelter than?
You don't want to see them abandoned, basically.
Than being just abandoned somewhere.
So as Ms. Pax said, we have the, number one, none of this will go into effect till January 1. And then secondly, we have the, we historically tried to synchronize this with the budget, but we on occasion have come back and made additional amendments as needed by resolution. So if you like, we could set aside the surrender fee and, and police report fees for additional detail and act on that.
I was about to suggest, if the Attorney General's coming out with something, I would, was going to suggest we not change the electronic photo media fee either until we see what, how that might be impacted by that.
When I say police report fees, I'm thinking all of those in the police department.
And I was just thinking we kick it all down until we have, you know, the records fees, the, the water fees, and just deal with it all at, at that time, if, if I'm understanding that one option.
That is an option, yes. We might want to take a look at it a little earlier than normal because we do like to give 60 or 90 days advance notice to people. So we might want to take a look at those water fees, maybe in October instead of November, so that we could capture this with that. Or we could come back at any time with this, too.
Historically, does anyone know why these two exercises are separated? Why don't we just do all this at once?
Which two exercises?
Work volume.
Water.
Oh, water typically, we're waiting for what we've done, what water usage we've had over the summer, because that's a big usage time. So we, we try to get some data from that information to, to actually go into those studies.
I, I can affirm that there's so much happens in the summer months with water and wastewater, that if you try to set the fees before about October, you're really shooting in the dark as to what your current year performance is.
And is that to try to compensate if there's a problem the earlier year? Or what would make one think that the next year will be anything like the prior year?
Actually, in the case of water, almost nothing because it varies a lot from one year to the next. But we just, you know, it's good to know as much as you can when you set that fee.
Yeah, probably the most likely scenario is if performance is poor and we need to try to recover from a bad year.
Have we given you direction or are we confused?
I heard to wait until the water and wastewater fees, but I'm not sure if that was a consensus.
Is for, we're talking about police surrender and the wastewater?
For the whole report, for the whole comprehensive fee schedule.
Well, look, the years I've been here, the, the water comes in late by itself, but it's, it's a small item, easy to handle, and I just assume getting 98% of it out of the way and just.
So you're suggesting go ahead with the comprehensive fee schedule, taking out those two items?
I guess.
Animal services, surrender fees?
Yeah, who suggested the surrender fee go to 10? Is that, was that from animal services? I'm not sure. I'm going to second guess them for some reason if they.
Yeah, I don't have any problem.
It's, it's probably minimal, the number of.
We could certainly get you more data.
I guess I'd have to know. I guess they're doing it because it's a time standpoint. I mean, I'm, it's, it's their recommendation. I don't have a, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem with it.
In terms of recovering costs, I can't imagine we can do, provide that service for $2, and that was probably their rationale.
To me, if you're going to do two, you do zero.
Do we know, do we know if we're talking 10 dogs a year or 100 dogs a year?
Yeah, that's why I said we, we could give you more data if that helped you make the decision.
Yeah, because I think it does come down to, you know, I know that we're talking about comprehensive fees, and I don't want to get into philosophical discussion, too, but, you know, I think that, I think that we just, if, you know, if we are, it would be helpful to know the volume and how much we lose on it every year because I feel like we also have a responsibility to, to pet owners to help them do the, the right thing.
I guess there's enough concern if we could get an answer from them, but I, I'm kind of, maybe this is what Commissioner Davis was getting at, I'd go ahead and, and implement everything except for those two or three items.
Except for? So except for surrender dog fees and the police photo media, that one that's going from 9 to 15?
I would say all the police fees.
All the police reports because of the.
Well, we're not changing any of the other police reports.
It's just the one.
It's just the one. So that would be the only thing that doesn't get affected. Okay, so without.
We'll report on, out on the others, but it's not proposed for a change at the moment.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next item we wanted to look at, as we talked Monday, we discussed the, the bond and interest fund target and the possibility of transitioning the police training facility debt payment to property tax. We have, all of our budgeted funds have budget targets. Some of them don't have, have zero targets because they are pass-throughs. We are in our, in the 2020 draft budget that we currently have, we anticipate that all the funds will meet their target balance except for the general fund, sanitation fund and golf course fund. And those are funds that we're just going to have to watch. Arts and Humanities, Central Garage and Golf Course are some that are very volatile, so we'll continue to watch those as we go along. As I mentioned Monday, the bond and interest fund target and the possibility of transitioning along. As I mentioned Monday, the bond and interest fund has had a fund balance of a little over $1 million at the end of 2019. The policy states that we should be not less than 10%, but not more than 15% of general obligation debt for the upcoming year. So we're recommending that the 2021 fund balance be $1 million in the debt service fund, based on the fact that our payments are around $7 million in 2021. The other item we talked about was, we originally had dedicated sales tax dollars to paying off the debt of the police training facility. We adopted that back in 20, in the 2018 capital improvement program, but we see with the funds that are available, that the River Renewal Project, which is one of the ones, one of the projects that we use to incentivize the sales tax initiative, is possibly going to be shorted in that whole process by funding it out of there. So in an effort to free up some sales tax funds, we're recommending that we fund the police training facility debt out of property tax, using the current mill levy rate. So options here are to set, for the target balance is to go ahead and set the 2020 fund balance at $1 million, to set it at a different amount, or to leave it at the current fund balance, which is $200,000.
If you were to move the target balance to a million, do you anticipate that taking an X number of years to get there?
No, I would anticipate that it is already there.
21, okay. Because we're, what, a million eighty?
Eighty-nine.
Nine, yeah, so, okay.
Yeah. Now, and that number could change, fluctuate each year, and we can look at that every year, depending on what our debt payment is. But in looking at the historical data, it looked like that $1 million was going to be about right in the middle of where that number was going to fall. Should we spend it down?
You know, the, I almost hate to say this, the range is 10 to 15% recommended balance, you know.
In the debt service fund, the revenue stream is pretty well assured, because it's mostly property tax. So there's not a great deal of risk. We're going to lose a lot of revenue in any one year. And so I'm not sure, we shouldn't set it closer to the 10% level, which would be about 800,000 instead of a million. In other words, I, we definitely need more than 200. That makes me extremely uncomfortable. But getting too high also makes me uncomfortable. I'm just saying maybe 800 would be a better number.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
It says it is.
Nope.
Try now.
When you pull it forward, your button hits.
Yeah.
You certainly, it could, that makes sense, and as a governing body, you certainly can set a number.
10%, seven, so if you went to 750,000, if you had the two, where would that, if we were to take those funds, those reserve funds, would they roll into the general fund then?
No.
Where would they go?
They would stay in the debt service fund until we made a, we would have to make decisions that created funds that, to divert it from going into the debt service fund, to go to the general fund. For example, if we wanted funds to go to the general fund, we'd have to divert property tax levies from the debt service funds to lower than, and get it into the general fund. We just can't take it from the debt service fund and put it in.
The next year, we could increase levy in the general fund a little bit and decrease it in the bond and interest fund a little bit, keep the same overall levy, but...
But reach the target balance by just collecting less than what you're taking, okay.
Now, we do have other funding that's going in there. We're directing transient guest tax in there. We always have an option not to do that. We have other taxes that are going in there, obviously, that we have to, by statute motor vehicle tax. We have sales tax transfers going in there. So there are some other revenue sources that we could adjust to reduce that fund balance also.
Our target balance is 200. We've got to that $1 million. For some reason, has it been there? I can't remember back the last year or two. Has it continued to be in that $1 million range, or has it just kind of grown in the last few years for some reason?
I think it's been there for a while. I'm not sure exactly when it got there, but I think it's been there for a while.
So we've got there, and we've just been keeping it there by the way we're collecting the tax, or the dollars, so. Thoughts on that?
I'm okay with 750 or 800. You know, I think that's pretty solid.
Yeah, I'm fine, whatever.
Pick a number.
Yeah. Pick a number.
800.
So set the fund balance at 800,000? Okay. And then the second option, the second decision point is whether we want to direct us to budget the debt payments for the police training facility from property tax, or leave it in the sales tax capital fund?
Property, it sounds like a great place for a facility like this to be coming from anyway. I mean, it's, you know, police, fire.
Was that, was that a 1% increase in the mill? Did we, was that for the police facility?
I don't know. Was there a specific increase slated to pay for the police training facility out of debt service?
No.
No. The numbers that I provided you showed that if we kept the mill levy in the debt service fund as it is today in 2020, we could sustain that payment in the, for the police training facility through its payment cycle.
Okay, that's...
And it extends the term of the debt.
Extends the term of the debt.
From 15 to 20, right.
From 15 to 20, yep.
And as we mentioned previously, the police training facility was not contemplated as part of the sales tax numbers or initiative. It kind of ended up there after the fact. This helps the sales tax fund and helps us accomplish what we were trying to accomplish there.
Does that affect the calculation of the mill levy cap?
The cap? Well, we're prepared to speak to that, too.
No, because it would be general obligation debt either way. It doesn't matter whether you're getting it from property tax or sales tax. The state doesn't care when you're looking at your debt levy.
Are we...
Because it's all general obligation debt.
We have consensus to do that?
It doesn't allow us to do anything mills or anything like that either, though.
I think I like that idea, because I know we've been looking at that special sales tax fund continually, trying to figure out how we're going to balance that, and...
We're still going to have to have those conversations, but this will help a ton.
But it helps. It's a step in the right direction.
Well, I have a question that rolled through my mind after we discussed the 2021 CIP, and that was the placement of the purchase of additional water was also on the sales tax, and it seems to me water is for everyone.
We're going to get to that item.
With the same logic, to put it into property tax, be applicable. It seems to me the $2 million that we bought the original water source from, maybe Mr. France can confirm my memory.
I think the reason that that was directed there was because it's directly related to the river project. It's supplemental water to provide water through the river channel.
It's recreational water rights, so that we can do the river project.
For everybody, but...
Same theory. So we're all in consensus that we move that to property tax revenue?
Yes.
Okay. The next item that we brought up in our budget discussions was how we were going to, if we were going to have the ability to use the special parks fund for items of capital equipment purchases. Just for, to put it in perspective, we have about $900,000 allocated in the sales tax capital fund to fund a new vehicle and equipment replacement, and we had requests about $2.5 million just this year. We know that our, our equipment, especially in parks, is very old and needs to be replaced. Currently, the fund has $348,000 at the end of 2019, and its target balance is $50,000. Recently, in the most recent past, that fund has been used for replacement playground equipment in the different parks around the city. But in the last couple of years, it's been more, look at the maintenance plan, look at those top priorities, and try to do some of that. Per the statute, we're allowed to use that money for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of park and recreational services programs and facilities. So staff believes in historical use of the city skyline shows that the use of these funds for the purchase of equipment to maintain our park facilities is an acceptable use of funds. In an effort to replace a very aged fleet, we're recommending that $251,000 be budgeted in the 2021 budget out of the special parks fund to replace five pieces of parks maintenance equipment. We'd also like to recommend that we develop an equipment replacement schedule for parks, and look into the possibility of utilizing this fund as a debt payment source for some sort of lease financing package for those, for that program. We would obviously not recommend that we use more than half of the available funding each year for that debt service funding. So our options for you are direct staff to budget the purchase of the parks maintenance equipment in the amount of 251,000 from the special parks fund in 2021, to direct us not to utilize that for these equipment purchases, and to utilize that for other maintenance priorities in the parks maintenance master plan. And also, we'd like you to give us some direction on developing that equipment replacement schedule, and your willingness for us to look into the options of some sort of lease financing packages for those.
So if I could add just a little bit, and I've mentioned this before, but as Ms. Pack described, each year when we have this $2.5 million worth of requests and $900,000 worth of funds, parks just never beats out competing priorities in terms of public safety, patrol vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, you name it. And we, and their fleet literally is 20-plus years old in terms of their mowers. So you combine that, and I think that's what contributed to why we find ourselves in the situation we're in. You combine that with the special parks funds, understandably, we're prioritized for parks improvements. We've made headway in that regard. We've also made headway in terms of the sales tax funding being, now parks has $500,000 dedicated to improvements, and we've, we put the park master plan together, we prioritized it. I'm not going to say that things aren't going to crop up, that are going to jump, you know, ahead of other things in the park master plan prioritization, but I think we kind of have a plan in place. We've done an inventory, we've got a park master plan in place, we have a priority system in place, we have funding for that, and this is the first time we felt like we might have an opportunity to try to address the equipment issues in parks.
Question, it says five-year lease purchase financing package. Explain how that works, because it's not just a lease, it's a lease to purchase?
No, really, what I'm talking about is a loan. It's a short-term loan, just like you would have on your car. You own it, you keep it, that type of thing.
Okay.
And the intent would be to synchronize the term with the less than or at least equal to the useful life of the equipment, although we've proven we can get 20 years out of a whole...
And have some sort of rolling capability to replace enough every year to get to the point where you're...
The advantage to that is we don't need the upfront cash to do it.
And the other advantage is now you've amortized that cost, and if we can get in that habit, we have a replacement plan for our equipment on an ongoing basis. If we, if we make a lump sum purchase in year one, and we get out of the habit, and we have to find the funds in year six, to do the end.
Would you look to do that on all equipment, or just certain pieces of equipment?
Well, one of the tasks that we're trying to do outside of the budget process is inventory all of our equipment, whether it's, you know, leased purchased or not, and amortize all that cost, so that we can come back to you and say, if we were really going to fund our vehicles and equipment, here's how much annual allocation it would take, whether we get it out of the existing budget, out of the sales tax fund, or now we can have a conversation across the organization about what vehicles and equipment should cost.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to say, it is possible to set up a general capital replacement fund that you money into each year, and then, as I recall, the way that works is you budget to put the money into the fund, but when you buy the equipment, that is not necessarily a budget expenditure, because you budget the quantity.
I seem to be having problems with that mic. Anyway, so the idea is just that, to get that amortization done on an annual basis.
If we thought we could get more life out of this equipment, we could try to get that set up, but given the situation we find ourselves in, trying to jumpstart it.
Yeah, I get that. At some point, you're behind the eight ball, and you need to try to catch up.
Right. We're trying to get to the point where we can have the ability to say, we have fairly new equipment, and we can wait five years, or whatever that term is, to go to the next set of replacement. But we have such old equipment in some of these areas that we've got to start it. We've got to push the start button.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to at least inventory equipment and look at where you're at on replacement. I mean, because you're being proactive instead of reactive, and I think that would be beneficial to start that process.
You've heard me refer to it before as whack-a-mole. That's what our current approach feels like. It's which is the worst problem that cropped up this budget year.
Well, I'm good with 1 and 3.
Any other comments? Everybody else okay?
I'm okay with the plan, yeah.
1 and 3? Now, we're to your capital improvement program. As you know, we set a five-year capital improvement plan. This year, we have the new projects that we have on it that are not really new. For 2021, is the first phase of construction for the Smoky Hill River project at $7 million. We do have the water storage from Canoplis Lake out of their, out of sales tax at $960,000. The streets program, the park maintenance plan, and the hike bike trail are items that we've had in there for many years. Hike bike for $50,000, parks maintenance for $500,000 out of sales tax, and the streets enhancement program out of sales tax at $3.2 million. The other projects, the newer projects are northbound Ninth Street Bridge construction. As you recall, we did the design this year, and we put off the construction due to COVID. So that's about a $1.9 million project that would be bonded and paid out of property tax. The Tony's Pizza Event Center basketball floor, I put that back on the item, because, as you know, we were going to do that this year, and we were going to take it out of fund balance, but with COVID and all the discussion of what that fund balance is going to be, I'm not sure that the fund balance is going to be sufficient to pay for that item. So I wanted to get it back on to the list. Another item from Tony's Pizza is the HVAC control replacement, so that's to replace the four units over Heritage Hall, and to get that program all into one unit, so that it can be programmed as we leave it, at a cost of about $160,000. The water line improvements that we've been budgeting, or we've been financing over the past five or six years, we're transitioning into a cash, a cash spending on those at $2 million. And the other project that's in here is the construction of the water treatment plant for $28 million, which would come out of the utility fund. The other section of the CIP plan is the sub-CIP, and we're not asking for specific authorization or approval for specific items today, but what we're asking for is the allocation of these funds from other funds to spend for these items. So the categories that we typically look at, and this, too, is in your support documentation, the detail list, is CIP planning, which we budgeted at $100,000. Buildings and facilities over all funds is $416,750. Park improvements, which is the vehicles we just talked about out of the parks fund at $251,000. Streets for $4,694,998. Vehicles and equipment out of all funds at $1,959,400. And enhancements to the water and wastewater fund are system at $1,960,000. And the list on the right is where the source of those funds comes from, which is the general fund, sales tax, special tax, gas tax, sanitation, solid waste, and utility fund. We're asking for you to affirm these projects, and basically to allocate the funding as we currently have them in the CIP, and we'll have this discussion later in the year, where we'll look at the detail of the projects, and give us a no-go on the specifics. Or we can defer the conversation, and you could give us some direction on that. Commissioner Ryan, we still do have an opportunity to move that funding to another source if we so chose to do that.
Are we talking about the water storage?
The water storage, yeah. Just like the police training facility, we can say we're going to fund it out of there, but until we actually do it, we always have that opportunity to change it.
Again, I would think that the water utilities would be the place to take that Smoky Hill water storage item from, and especially, I don't know, I'd love to hear staff make a compelling argument to me, why not? It's, it takes less, it takes less out of the sales tax fund.
Ms. Tasker wasn't available today because she had a meeting, but I'm sure she would address that with you when we talk about the details of the CIP.
I agree with that. I agree with Commissioner Ryan on that one, too. That... I agree with Commissioner Ryan on that one, too. That just, I don't know, it seems like that's, and financing that over 15 years, I mean, if there's another option to pay for that, either outright or do that.
So what we'll do is, we'll, before we bring it back to you for CIP approval, we'll look at those options, whether it's paying for cash out of sales tax or out of the water fund or either one of those options.
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah.
The water fund, we're already adding the new Southwell facility, too, also.
And the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we're not going to have to spend for groundwater contamination remediation out of that.
Out of that, yeah.
But I think that it's a little over simplistic, but I think the immediate answer to why not out of the water fund is that water purchase is not treated and consumed and sold to customers. It is purchased so that we can divert it through the Smoky Hill River downtown as an aesthetic improvement.
I think the only similarity to what our water department does is that it just happens to be water.
Water.
Yeah. But other than that, it's got nothing to do with what our water division's function is.
So in the event of a terrible drought, we couldn't capture using that water for any purpose?
It's a, I'd have to verify, but it is a recreational water right, and it's actually limited because of the recreational nature of it, when we can draw on it. So it is very well tailored to the river project.
I suspect in that kind of drought, we wouldn't be able to pull it for any purpose.
We bought assurance water for drought purposes that we would be able to pull, but I don't think we can pull the recreational right.
So it is a backup to our basic, to the basic water right we, the other water right we purchased. And did we pay for that water right out of the water?
Yes, the water assurance water we did, and that was $2 million, I believe. And I don't want to give you bad information, I'll verify, but I think, I think we have limitations on when we could draw that water down based on drought conditions and otherwise. And then, I don't know that there's any provision for it to be for consumption.
So these are all just CIP projects that we'll look at as a, because unlike the Smoky Hill River construction phase, I think the Corps of Engineers is behind, and so we really don't even know if we'll have a 2021.
No, we don't.
So, yeah. But it's got to be, but we have it out there just to.
Right. If you approve this, staff's going to proceed as if those are projects to be completed in 2021 with a couple of caveats. Number one, like you said, the Corps of Engineers is vital to that.
Yeah.
And then, depending on COVID and financial performance, we may be coming back having a whole nother conversation about what the numbers will really support.
I just call this a wish list.
Sets the priorities.
Kind of, yeah, so. Okay. Any issues? I mean, we'll be addressing them later, so, okay?
So direction on that one is?
Just to continue on.
Just number one?
Yep, number one.
The next issue that we are addressing is the pay plan. We currently have, our pay plan currently has 400, and I didn't put that in here, 487 employees, I believe. We're proposing to add two additional employees to the buildings and facilities division, two part-time employees. Based on full-time salary costs across all funds, the 2021 estimate for salaries only is a little over $25 million. We're not requesting any major reclassifications within the pay plan at this time. However, City Commission does provide the city manager with authority to make modifications as needed, dependent on budget funds being available. Staff bases such changes only upon valid and tangible needs that are determined to benefit organizations. We've looked and we've heard many, many times this year about where certain levels of our employees are, so we have a couple of pay plan options that we would like to present to you. The first one is that recognizing it is very difficult to fill requirements of the street maintenance workers. We are recommending that we increase their pay grade from a G to a J, which would adjust their starting pay and would adjust the current pay for some employees, looking at compression a minimum and below, a minimum below new pay grade minimum. Factors in increasing starting pay for vacancies are, if available, and the estimated impact of this cost is about $56,000 to, or $66,000 to the general fund. This is one of those positions that's hard to fill, and so we're trying to move them up to a level that we think is more competitive with other positions of like kind. The other item that we've had issue with significantly is the number of employees that we have that have CDL licenses. We require them, we have to have CDL drivers when we, when we do our snow removal in the winter, and if we drive large equipment that the city owns. So we're recommending that we provide additional, we provide a CDL compensation for staff that would be available for snow removal and debris cleanup. We're recommending a 50 cent per hour additional compensation for park technicians who are hold a CDL certification, are willing and able to be on call for snow removal and debris cleanup, and the estimated impact for that is about $6,000. The capers and KPNF rates did go up slightly this year, about 2.26% for capers and about 0.87% for KPNF. Assuming a zero COLA and zero merit, the estimated cost for those are $4,144,795,000 for both, with $1.5 million being capers and about $2.6 million being KPNF. The pay plan options for you are to direct staff to implement the pay grade increase for street maintenance workers as proposed, to direct us to implement a pay grade increase to street maintenance workers at a different level, or to not implement a pay grade increase for street maintenance workers. We'll do these one at a time.
And between myself and Ms. Fisher, I think we can provide you a little bit more detail about the street maintenance workers. And I don't know the timing of it, Ms. Fisher should be able to tell you, but there was a reorganization in the Parks Department a while ago that consolidated Park Tech 1 and Park Tech 2, and was very effective for the Parks Department, but it had the, possibly the unintended consequence, or at least the net effect, of causing Park Tech employees to start at a higher rate than street maintenance workers. And then you combine that with the fact that we need a CDL license from a street maintenance worker, and we're asking street maintenance workers to plow snow, be on call and plow snow. We had an internal competition or equity issue between Park Tech workers and street maintenance workers. And so, what we looked at is even if we placed street maintenance workers at the same starting rate as Park Tech's, it still would probably be preferable to be a park technician, not have a CDL, not be on call. And so, this proposed approach places the street maintenance workers a pay grade above Park Tech, and then if we have park technicians willing to plow snow and can secure, willing to secure and maintain a CDL, and we can create, provide an incentive rate to compensate them for that, that additional task. So, don't know if that'll solve it. And then Mr. Wellerius was talking about their struggles of hiring CDLs. I think I shared with you before, I heard a presentation from KDOT that they adamantly say their turnover rate for CDL drivers is 100% a year. They lose them to, as soon as they get their CDL and some experience, they move on. We struggle hiring CDL licensed drivers, and it's a vital position for us. So that's the thinking behind the street maintenance worker reclassification, as well as then the additional compensation for CDL. If that's something we want to entertain, this action would make it effective in 2021. We probably need to have a conversation about making it effective before snow flies yet this year.
To the average driver, how much per two weeks or a month difference would that make? This $6,000 is obviously for all the.
Yeah, 50 cents would equate to about $1,000, well, $1,040 a year base, and then it would also apply to any overtime that they accrue, so.
All right, so, so just part of their job description then would change to where they are then on, being on call then becomes part of their job description.
Yeah, in return for agreeing to, yeah, in return for agreeing to be on call, then they would be eligible for that pay increase.
And we anticipate that these would be people who already have a CDL or who will go out and get one because of this opportunity?
Either one. And if they, if they're willing to go out and get one, that would be great.
How much does that cost? Anybody know how much it costs to get one? I have no idea.
Do not know.
Nobody knows? Okay. Just want to make sure it was cost-effect, I mean, you know, if it costs $1,000 to get one, gosh, doesn't really help much the first year unless they get a part-time job somewhere. Comments? I think it's a great idea, as long as, if it's enough of an increase.
I have a minor comment about the capers and KPNF. It's true that it increased by 26 percentage points, but that is a 3% increase in terms of thinking about a percentage from the base to the future. And with KPNF, that is actually a 4% increase from this year to next year.
Oh, that suits me. Yep.
And unfortunately, that's out of our control.
Yeah, I know. That's actuarially set by somebody in Topeka who knows a lot more than any of us, apparently.
Right. So first, we'd like to get some direction on the two pay plan adjustments for the street workers and the CDL compensation, and then we're going to talk about overall pay plan adjustments that we're putting forth and the cost of those.
I'm fine with adopting both of those.
I'm okay with those, yeah.
Yeah, but if, I mean, if you do see that, you know, 50 cents an hour isn't sufficient to retain our CDL drivers, then I would encourage you to look at what exactly that would take.
1 and 1?
And we're trying to be cognizant in the fact that we don't want our street maintenance workers, starting at the higher level, required to have a CDL, making still less with the 50 cents, so there's a lot of things.
Right, there's a lot of moving parts.
We talked about that number a lot.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I think we're okay with that, looks like.
Okay. So for the overall pay plan adjustment, staff has calculated, and this is also an attachment to your support information here, we've calculated the cost of, a 2% cost of living effective January 1st, a 2% merit increase on the anniversary date of the employee or a combination of both. And just a reminder, COLA is an increase that's applied to all employees regardless of their position on the pay grade. It's effective on a specific date. It could be January 1st, it could be July 1st, it could be any date that you would choose. And it actually raises the starting wage of the pay plan, so it raises that pay plan start number up, which may enable the city to be a little bit more competitive and get us more in line with our competitors. A merit increase is based on performance. In our proposal, it could be anywhere from 0 to 2% based on employee's performance. If employees have reached the top of their pay grade, they are not, they do not qualify. It's effective on the employee's anniversary date and does not affect the starting salary levels of the pay plan. We wanted to include here, as we look at the cost of these options, the revenue generation of one mil is about $449,000. So if Tara, I'm just going to look at my, look for my sheet, because I've got mine all backwards. So basically, what we're showing is the cost of a 2% merit would be about $300,000, a little over $300,000 to all the funds, $240,000 to the general fund. A 2% COLA for all employees would be a cost of $514,000 to the general fund, a total of $641,500 to all funds. A combination of both would cost the general fund about $750,000 and all funds about $950,000. So as we go through this, Tara actually has a spreadsheet that she's been keeping track of these decisions that you've been making as we've gone along as far as pay plan and those types of things. This will show us what we showed you last week, where we anticipate the budget to be at. And as you remember, we anticipated we'd be about $700,000 to the good in the general fund, keeping in mind that about $400,000 of that is that OCCK savings that we're going to be recognizing. So we're backing that number out of our calculations because we believe we need to leave that there. So if you look at this calculation with what we've done to date, with the changes you've made to date, we currently are expecting that our net income to be $881,000. With 336 of that being attributable to the OCCK, leaves us a net income of about $544,000 without an increase in the mil levy. So that's kind of our baseline. So if we wanted to do something more than that, leave a fund balance, we obviously want to work on our fund balance, we'll need to look at consideration of the mil levy increase.
Did I read somewhere where we have individuals that are maxed out and the COLA would not affect them? Is that correct, or was I?
The COLA affects them, but a merit does not.
Right. So if we give just a straight COLA, that wouldn't affect those that are at the top of the pay scale?
They would still get it.
Oh, they would?
Yes, a COLA, but not a merit.
Not a merit.
Is that true?
Correct.
COLA, yes, merit, no.
Correct.
I think I had it backwards on my head, okay.
The COLA would increase their top end.
Okay.
So that might create a margin for some merit.
Are, are these numbers under the assumption that both of these things would occur, like on January 1st, 2021, or did you say?
On the assumption that the COLA would occur on January 2021.
And the others would occur on the.
Merits would occur on their anniversary dates. So what Tara does in her magic calculations is goes out to every employee, finds their anniversary date, and applies that merit.
Which is why the COLA costs more than the merit, even though they're both 2%.
Right, because we're paying them that for the full year as opposed to partial years.
And I may have misspoken. Debbie?
Yeah, so what we refer to as the COLA, the cost of living adjustment, is really also what we call a pay plan adjustment. So it takes all of our pay plans, and in the event of a 2%, it moves the minimum 2% and the maximum 2%. So someone who is topped out now at the maximum, we do that adjustment at 2%, they're going to be maxed out as soon as that happens.
Right, you're right.
So there's no, even in years where we would have a merit and a COLA offered, if they're, if they're topped out and we apply the cost of living adjustment, they're topped out again. So they're, unless some time down the road, we come up with a different approach to how we administer.
Thank you. The top end does move, but they move with it because of the.
The entire pay plans, and I say pay plan, classified, public safety, and executive, all of those would move by, whether it's the amount or the percentage that we deem appropriate when that COLA is applied.
So the other thing I feel compelled to say is, here we are in the middle of COVID, sweating, financial numbers, and we've come up with a budget that potentially could support COLAs and merits, and that's all on the premise that the numbers work, and we're going to have to continue to monitor, have a conversation, and revisit all of this. If the assumption is all this goes into effect January 1, we're going to have a go/no-go decision to be made shortly before January 1. But as the budget's currently built, and as Ms. Pack mentioned, I think you could find a way to support both if we also take advantage of the mil rate increase that's available from the cap.
You know, I've got an observation, and it's more, I realize that you apparently kind of have it covered this year, but sales tax generates about $13 million a year, is that right? Or 14 million? A 1% growth in sales tax generates about $130,000 to $140,000. So to match even a 2% merit means a 2% growth in sales tax to cover it. And that is why we're constantly under pressure, because the revenue growth simply is challenged to keep pace with the pressure on expenses. And it's very difficult to, and the result of that is we end up getting skinnier and skinnier in some places. My other comment is that if we fund the health insurance fund appropriately, it covers all of these costs. My other comment is that if we fund the health insurance fund appropriately, it covers all of these costs.
We've had that conversation, staff's had that conversation too.
That's about 700,000. And that would, that would cover, and that's to my point, that if we overfund things, we end up
Shorting.
shorting others.
And if we want to talk health fund now, if you think it interrelates, we can certainly do that.
I think it's the next item, right?
It is the next item.
But if it, if it impacts your decision on this item, we can.
That's a one-year.
That would, that would be a.
A one-year fix, yeah.
So is this.
I know.
I mean, almost every year, this is a one-year choice.
Just so we know that.
When do our, we have some pretty aggressive bond payments already set up through about, what, like 2024, 2026? I mean, they're just like really high, like in the 12 to 13.
I think we went out to like 2024 where we peaked and then started coming back down.
Right. So, I mean, I know that there's always.
But we have bond payments out to 2039.
Right. And I know that there's always going to be new projects that get added on to that. But it seemed like already we were really, were really tapped out through about 2024. I mean, just in terms of what we've already, our existing obligations. I mean, I would love to see us find a way to do some combination, even if that looks like a 1% COLA and a 2% merit. I feel like our employees have really stuck through us through thick and thin this year. And if there's any way to, to do it, I'd love to do that. But that being said, if that's predicated on the funds being available from OCCK this year and as Commissioner France said, changing our target in the health fund, I mean, I guess that gets us, that buys us through maybe 2022. But after that, I, you know, I don't know. So, but I would love to see us do some merit for sure. And if we can swing at a cost of living.
With respect to the health fund, we're self-insured, which just heightens the risk a little bit, probably heightens the fiscal conservatism a little bit, which is the reason we need a fund balance. And as you recall, last year, we, in an effort to, well, like, yeah, it was last year, right? Losing track of time. In an effort to kind of respond to our financial challenges then, we tried to, to address the fact that there was a little bit of capacity there. I think if we wanted to be more systematic about it, you go through that health insurance cycle in terms of plan renewal. You see what your rates are. Then you start into the plan and people have to meet their deductibles. And then once deductibles are met, the spending starts to kick in. And then as the plan year-end approaches, people will spend, you know, any remain, they'll, they'll take on elective procedures depending on what their circumstances. So the conversation we've had so far is more regularly and annually identifying a viewpoint where we can make an informed assessment of where we stand and where the fund balance is that takes into account, you know, our most recent experience. And then we can talk about some type of an adjustment to reset that fund balance and kind of supplement the general fund if possible versus trying to just withhold contributions on the front end. But there, there might be a little bit of capacity there. There's a lot of unknown in terms of claims history and us being self-insured. So.
Pay plan study. I know we've talked about that for years. Is there, I mean, I thought I saw that on a list somewhere. Is that something that we anticipate being able to get done during 2021?
We have it back on the sub-CIP list to do in 2021.
I think, I mean, I think that's going to give us some good information too in terms of.
I'm a little afraid what it's going to tell us.
Well, I am too. But in terms of our most dramatically, you know, underpaid in terms of where our expectations aren't even close to being reality, I think that's, you know, we may be having some different discussions after we receive that. So I guess.
And I may be getting a little far afield here, but, you know, we've been, we've had some conversations about our strategic planning sessions. We didn't do one this year, given COVID and everything that went on. But whether it's consultant-led or staff-led, my thinking has gravitated towards, it's a lot of what we're talking about right now, I think. It's financial, it's rightsizing, it's pay plan. And it'll be some, it'll generate some challenging goals that then we can try to manage to, which is the point of a strategic plan. And the pay plan is probably going to inform us as to where we are and where we need to be. And then if we tackle vehicles and maintenance, we tackle the pay plan, we tackle just kind of our budget issues, as Commissioner France has been talking about annually, we don't see enough growth. Those are some very tough decisions, but we get those behind us and our organization could be in much more solid position.
Just have a question that I don't know if there's right or wrong answer, but just to get your opinion. Which would rank-and-file employees consider a greater expression of our appreciation for their loyalty during the last year or two without raises and during the last four or five months in particular? Cost of living or merit? Cost of living, you know you're going to get merit, you might get.
Right.
And it's, and it doesn't help you the next year because it's, I mean, it doesn't increase your, I'm saying, any of your other benefits, I would assume.
Well, you don't go backwards. You don't lose it. But, you know, last year, when we were talking about COLA or merit, we as staff kind of had that conversation and collectively felt that a COLA was across the board to benefit all employees. Where a merit, you're still up in the air, both in terms of what you'll, whether you'll get it in the full amount and the timing of when you get it. So a COLA, every employee knows they're going to get it on the same day. They're going to get that, they're guaranteed to get that benefit. That was kind of our logic the last time.
Right.
And my understanding that if there was a 2% COLA and the 4% increase in the premiums, the employee would basically be in an unharmed position. I mean, that 2% is going to get offset by what the addition they have to pay in the health.
That's a really good question. We had a lot of conversation about that, too. When we, when we talk about a 4% increase, we're talking, what we mean by that is a 4% increase in the health insurance cost to the city. We're not necessarily saying we pass that through to the employee.
How's that pass back to the employee?
We're saying that we want to budget that in the event that we have to raise premiums to the city for that amount. We don't, we won't know that answer until January, October, November, December, January, when we start getting through a renewal period. We won't know what that number looks like.
But if you budget the 4% that's coming up next, that's a 4% increase in city expenses. And if we can use that to fund health insurance, we might have the opportunity to absorb that as the city and not, and it might change the percentage allocations between city and employee. But we might have the opportunity not to have to pass that through.
And this is coming from the private sector. Is there a way to, to bonus out so you're not adding to your annual cost? I mean, in the private sector, you can do that. I don't know if you can do that, you know, in a municipality? I mean, because you could give a 2% bonus to everyone and then that would not add to your, your next. If we were concerned about where we were going to be at, you know, one of these years, if we had the ability to do that, I'm just throwing that out there.
You may not call it a bonus, but we could get there.
Yeah, I call it a bonus, but a one-time payout.
It could be a one-time payment that does not affect your pay rate.
Yeah.
We actually did that in one of the cities I worked in and it, it was okay, you know. At least we did it for a year or two and I can't actually remember anymore how, how that went. But it wasn't, it wasn't a terrible option.
I'm just throwing that out there.
But it does keep you from increasing that base. The problem is, on the expense side, just like for us, an employee's expenses aren't arranged like a bonus. They're arranged like it's a baseline that increases every year. So I don't know that it is particularly advantageous for them.
Another option that has been talked about is rather than a percentage, a flat dollar amount for each employee, which creates, as a percentage, more benefit for the lower paid employees. It creates all sorts of compression in the pay plan, especially if you do that multiple times over time.
You know, I'm thinking back, I think it was on, in the last set of information you handed, there was a graph that showed the percentage increases granted over the years. And there's about five years there where there was no cost of living increase granted. And one or two where there was no merit and then merits were at a suppressed level for a while. And that happened following the 2008 recession. And we had actually just done a pay plan, which was fairly costly to implement because of all the adjustments. And then we proceeded not to give COLAs for five years, which probably undid the pay plan. You know, in terms of, we didn't keep up with the market in those, in those terms. So it, you know, I like the idea of looking at the pay, looking at a pay plan again to kind of assess where we are. But I also kind of have concerns about that because I know when we get to the end of the day on that, there's going to be a tab waiting for us. It's almost inevitable.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to say something that got Commissioner Ryan in trouble a few years ago. You know, if you're looking at expenses, you got to look at your income. Again, on the private sector, again, you've, you've got to do this. And I would like to see some numbers updated because, you know, you, you hear the public out there, oh, I can't hardly afford to live in Slene and I'm overtaxed and yada, yada, yada. Well, when you compare us, and I've, this is a 2019, when we look at sales tax out of 31 cities, we're number eight. And you look at mil levy, we're eight out of 31. And then when you look at the total county, we're 11 out of 31. So no one likes tax, being taxed, but I think we maybe, again, have done it, are we doing a disservice to ourselves? And I don't think the public understands that. And so at some point, I almost want to publish it in the paper so people can see where we stand compared to other communities.
And you're saying number eight, we're the eighth highest or eighth lowest?
Eighth lowest.
Okay. I was thinking the other way.
No, what I'm saying is they're, you know, and again, you have to look at some of them where their, where their mil levy is versus sales tax and how that affects. But we're, we're at the point where we're a long ways from being out of line. And I think we perhaps, and I think that's what Commissioner Ryan said a year or two ago, that, you know, we've maybe done a little bit of a disservice by not looking at that. Because we have this discussion every year. We get to salaries and stuff and we're, we're a little bit, you know, hand-tied what we can do.
And as I pointed out, we're not in a position, at least not now, where we can rely on, you know, boomer sales tax growth to cover the cost because the sales tax is only, what, half of the general fund? And we pay salaries out of all of the general fund. And it just, that source alone, growth in that source alone, we cannot depend on to cover increasing costs. It has to come from the other sources also. So.
If I can go back, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just one, one second. Something that maybe would be helpful for me next year is maybe we start with the pay plan and then we figure out what else, how we're going to fund everything else. Because I think that by putting this off till the very last discussion item, sometimes I feel like we're trying to align our budget on the backs of the employees. And maybe we start with what we want to do for our employees and then figure out how much of the rest of the stuff that we can fund. I mean, it's just maybe a different, and I, it wasn't, that's not an original thought of mine. I think I stole it from one of you guys or somebody. But it resonated with me and it's like, maybe if we start from the assumption of, you know, this is what we want to do for our employees, then maybe some of the other things of like, you know, that we talked about earlier in terms of, you know, leasing equipment or whatever. I mean, you have those in somewhat of a different light because you're approaching it with, you've already, you've already had this discussion. So.
We actually have a long history of doing that. And traditionally, it's been, you know, employees cost us more, other operations cost us more. So we reduce capital expenses or we move them to the sales tax. And at this point, there's not much capital left in the general fund to move. And so we're looking at, what are salaries as a percentage of our general fund budget? 60, 70%?
Yeah, close to 70.
So if you want to increase salaries by 2% and cover that by reduction in the other expenses, you got to reduce everything else by 4% or 5% to make that difference.
Gotcha, yeah.
And that becomes a very improbable math at some point.
Back to Commissioner France's point earlier, I agree with that, kind of the historical, we did the pay plan, saw a big bump and we focused on merits over COLAs. And I think part of that logic was that we wanted to pay for performance and our pay plan was generally, you know, strategically in the right place. As we've not done COLAs over time, that's kind of shifted on us and our pay plan leaves us not in a competitive position, which is what contributes to my shifting focus from merits to COLAs to try to, if you have to pick between the two, I would put priority on COLAs to address all the employees in the organization equitably.
So anticipation of this decision, then we also have in this graphic the ability that we could add a mil levy personal, to the property tax to see what that does to the bottom line. And then we could deduct whatever choice you make here. Roughly about $449,000 for a mil levy. So if we added that amount into the equation, then that gives that bottom line a little bit more of an idea. And basically, then we have to decide of that bottom line, what, what do we want to leave on, on the table? One, for contingency for, you know, estimates or COVID comes back or whatever. And two, to, to increase our fund balance.
And just to confirm, all of this math takes the OCCK savings and puts it to the fund balance?
Yes.
Because that's the one-time savings that we don't want to build into the budget.
So right now, we have $544,000 on the table, accounting for everything else with no, with no mil levy increase.
That'd be basically like a 2% merit and 1% COLA pretty much, or vice versa. Would probably get you in that $500,000 range.
And that's assuming you don't want to do a property tax increase.
Right, if you didn't want to, right.
If you wanted to, then you would have some.
You could do a 2-2 and you'd have a little bit.
I think it might be helpful to go to the property tax conversation.
As, as you recall, property taxes on the, as our last issue. When we talked the other day, we looked at the tax cap. Our current mil levy is 29.719. We had minimal growth in real estate. We had decline in personal property as we know we did, would with the, the legislation that happened in 2006. Currently, we have the capacity under our tax lid to go about 1.04 mils without having to go to a general election. So that gives us about $467,000 in tax dollars. We were not anticipating proposing that unless we wanted to use it for the pay plan adjustments.
And if we don't do that, then what we're doing is we're using the OCCK savings this year or in 2021.
It could be, yes.
And then we will face the consequences in 2022.
And we may be limited in what those, inability is by the tax lift.
If you, if you don't raise your mil levy this year, you're limited on what you could do it next year.
Exactly.
And again, this is, this is a year old, but if we, and I'm just, if we raised the city mil levy 1%, we'd still be as a city number eight on that list of 31. If we raised it on a percent on the county, and this again is a year old, we'd move from 11 to 12. So that, you know, so we're still.
Well, I'll put my cards on the table and, you know, I'm in favor of raising the mil levy to the, to the limit of the cap. It looks to me like, to be fair to the employees, something like the 2% COLA. And then maybe considering the merit later is the way to go and.
That's actually what I was.
Given the unknowns that we've got.
That's what I was thinking.
Unless you want to discuss going to the electorate and asking for a tax increase. But I don't know that this is the greatest environment to do that in. Somebody might convince me if there's a good strategy to do that. But I think there's a lot of support out there for us increasing our budget. But their expectations are not going to be us necessarily taking care of the employees. There's a lot of individual projects people want to see taken care of. And if, if we could get a mandate from a majority for some of those. of those projects we've heard about, it could pass, possibly.
I'm fine with that. I mean, the 2% and 1% in the raising the mill levy.
Yep.
So just to clarify, if we take advan, if we raise the mill levy as the cap allows, does that create enough funding for merit and COLA?
I think if you do the 2% COLA, you have a number higher than our cap, right? So it's sort of splitting it.
Is that, is that the one mill, Tara?
Yeah, 1.04 is what I...
Okay, so if, if we increased it to the cap, that would leave us $1 million on the table. We could do both. It'd be pretty tight, though. We'd only be leaving, leaving $60,000, $70,000 on the table, which is not much growth in your fund balance.
And that's including OCCK? I can't see.
No, we've taken out the OCCK.
So that's not including the OCCK?
Correct. It's going to grow by the value of the savings in OCCK.
I'd defer the decision on the merit until later.
So what you're suggesting is move forward with the COLA, the 2% COLA, and then look at the merit later in the year, possibly before the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, I think the crystal ball gets a little clearer later in the year.
I'd be for the 2% COLA, yeah.
Yeah, I think from, from a budget standpoint and from a, you know, cap and budget or submission to the state standpoint, I think you go ahead and budget for that.
For that.
Knowing that we're going to have to have, you know, a conversation between now and the end of the year to figure out whether we're actually going to pull the trigger.
I'm okay with that. The other commissioners are...
Yeah.
Do you want us to budget for two and two, or I heard two and one?
Yeah, 1% just, like, 2% is a small number, 1% is a real tiny number. I mean, it's just...
Especially if you're talking about a merit, because you only get 2% if you exceed all of your...
Correct.
So if you're just a run-of-the-mill, average person, you're not even going to get half a percent. So, you know, if you're not an exemplary employee that gets all exceeded.
Right, and if it's holding a place in the budget, I'd put as much in there as we can.
Okay.
It's essentially what we'd be doing, and whether it's the merits, whether it's the COLAs, or whether it's capital improvements, we're going to have to have a conversation before year-end about what have we observed about COVID in the next six months. And so I want to be sure, I, I know you understand, I want the general public to understand that we're going to have to continue to monitor on an ongoing basis and adapt based on what we see. So we skipped over health.
Yeah, I was going to, well, if you're going to cast qualified employees, you're going to have to take, you know, because that job market's pretty tight out there, and I think it's only going to, you know, if, once we get past COVID-19, you know, whether that's next year or whenever, I think the market's going to get tight again, and you're, you run into that, you know, but when you're bumping up against the private sector, you got to, you got to be competitive.
So I think that really answers our question for 11 and nine. The last issue then that we would have to cover is health insurance, and we kind of touched on this a little bit earlier, but what we're proposing in, in this budget is to increase the expenditure side of the budget for health insurance by 4% in the event the premiums need to be raised in the spring. We're not proposing that they're going to go up, we're not proposing any of that, but we're proposing that we allocate that additional 4% in our operating budgets.
Just for budgeting purposes.
In the event that we needed to do that. That's, that's really that, this discussion point is all, that's all.
Have we ever had it increase over 4%? Have we had to?
Yes, we've done 5% before. Oh, in a premium? I'm not sure.
Is that 4% historical?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe 5%, but it's been a while.
Okay.
We've, we've had some good experience lately, so, but...
We don't know with COVID what.
Yeah.
It takes a couple.
I know that word.
So is the consensus that we leave that 4% in our budget? Okay.
I'd go two, just to be, I'd go two.
Two, not four?
Not four.
Why?
I think we're leaving money on the table.
Well, we're only, we're only doing our expenditures.
But that drives the revenue side.
Only if we collect it. Only if we change the premium in the spring and collect it, then would the revenue side change. The budget on the revenue side would increase, that's correct, because it's based on what we're budgeting for expenditures.
If we do two, and the premium, and the cost to us exceeds two, we could spend down the fund balance.
We could. That's my point.
Which I think is what you're getting at, right?
The fund balance in our operating funds?
And, no, in, in the health insurance fund.
So you're saying then we wouldn't apply all of the premium to the...
If we go 2% instead of four, we're charging our operating funds less, and the fund balance would be expected to erode in the health insurance fund.
To abort the premium.
I'd wait about six months before you start reducing that fund balance too. I don't know if we've had any real COVID impact on our health expenses yet, but, you know, six people catastrophically ill for three months is going to eat up half that fund balance before you get to the stop-loss protection.
You run that risk every year.
It seems like we have a pretty good, I don't want to jinx anybody, but...
Well, apparently the consensus is four to one, so you can, you can...
That was my next question. Okay, so, so you've given us the answers that we need to provide you, the draft budget, which is what we'll do on Monday. We'll provide you that draft budget for all of the funds, we'll provide you the detailed line item detail for all of those funds. Can't remember, is there anything else that you'd like us to provide in that information that we haven't already provided?
If I can back up, Jacob and I were having a side conversation. When we talk about 4% or 2%, we're talking in the general fund expenditure.
Yeah.
And we'll also have to have a health fund budget, so we may end up saying we're going to assume 2% increase in the general fund, we may budget a 4% increase in the health fund, and the net effect of that will be to spend the health fund balance down.
So how much is that 2% difference worth in the general fund?
I think that was only like $100 and, oh, wait, it's on here.
4% is worth $150,000 to the general fund.
So $75,000.
So $75,000. To the general fund.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what the conclusion, what your consensus was on that.
To leave it at the four.
Leave it at four. It was a four to one, as Rod said, Mr. Franz.
Unofficial four to one.
Unofficial.
And what, well, in the past, we've tried to go to market and, or get renewal information around October, which is a little problematic, because it's early in our renewal cycle and causes them to be a little conservative, but we'll, should know something in the fall, and the rate effect should take effect in February?
Are we Blue Cross Blue Shield? Yeah. Yeah, it'll be interesting. I don't know how the national numbers are affecting, affect us. It'll be interesting. Miss Fisher has a comment.
You might recall when we were discussing our options before we went ahead with the renewal at Blue Cross, our insurance consultant, Bob Charlesworth, had offered to do a mid-year new, or a mid-year review of the, both the plan performance, as well as possibly look at some other options, whether it's vendors or products out in the market. So we get ahead of that. And I actually have been working with him, trying to come up with a date for that to happen. He wanted another month of claims, so he had a better picture, so we're looking at having that conference call next month. Currently, our plan is performing very well. Call me a worrywart, there's a lot of things that I don't think are being allocated into our claims yet. There were some claims not being processed as quickly in February.
Because of COVID?
Well, it had to do actually with...
Oh, February, you're right.
Contract and some staff turnover on the Blue Cross side that, that slowed things being implemented for us. And then with COVID, there's a lot of elective things being pushed off, a lot of services not being provided that we'd normally see, and then we have a share plan, which, once our employees, it's a 50-50 share plan, so once they hit their maximum out of pocket, they don't have any more. But traditionally, as the plan year goes on, we start incurring more and more because more people hit that. With all of the electives being deferred, fortunately, we haven't had a lot of ill individuals on our plan, to my knowledge, but I would expect that our claims are going to start accelerating more so because of all of the things that have been pushed off that we'll then experience later in the year. So a lot of moving things, but we should know more even in a month. Don't know what the national averages are yet for projections for next year, don't really know the impacts of COVID, don't know what our stop-loss insurance, which is rolled into our administrative fees with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're a third-party administrator, don't know what those look like. In addition to it being just our group, they also look at the whole state and see what the impacts are there. So a lot of unknowns, so far, so good, but a couple more months, we should, we should have a better understanding.
While we're talking about it, you may explain who all is in our group, just for their benefit.
So who's covered? Obviously, the City of Salina employees and any of their dependents. We also cover retirees. Statutory requirement by municipalities and public entities and state to be able to offer, we have to offer retirees insurance. The Salina Public Library, the Salina Housing Authority, the Airport Authority, those are also our subgroup, so those individuals can opt in and be covered as part of our plan.
And those agencies pay what we would pay for our employees, as long as if we're expensing those coverages.
Right, so we refer to them as our subgroups, but they're, they're covered in our plans, same coverage. We don't manage how those entities divvy up and set their premiums. All they know is we give them idea on what's, we're planning on from a budget standpoint, and then when we get further into the process with our renewals, we do open enrollment typically in December for a February renewal. We don't have a January renewal, renewal being when the plan year starts.
Housing Authority, Library, Airport Authority, what else do you?
Yes, and then our retirees. And then COBRA, but I don't consider them necessarily a subgroup, because those are just by circumstance individuals that are covered for a short period of time when they leave our employment or leave one of those individual organizations, the subgroup's employment.
At their expense.
Yes.
If I could ask, who's included in the retirees? Because once you're old enough and you're eligible for Medicare, you're no longer on the plan, so it's early retirees.
Right, so then there's...
Am I correct?
There are some stipulations. Typically, to be considered a retiree, I want to say you have to retire through the KAPER system and be here a minimum of 10 years, and then once a retiree hits age 65, the age off of our, our retirement.
Sixty-six now, I think, or whatever, yeah.
So, yep. Public safety is typically going to have a larger concentration because through KPNF, they can retire earlier than the KAPER system allows.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, what else do you need from us?
That's all I need.
Sorry, you wanted to describe next steps, just so they have a sense of...
I did, when you were talking to Jacob.
It's Jacob's fault, he's over there talking to him, so. Thank, thank you again to staff. I know this was a quick turnaround, again, since Monday, so...
We appreciate your patience and your willingness to put us in an extra meeting, because it certainly was needed.
Thank you, guys. We're adjourned.
Yeah, I guess we don't need a formal motion.
Nope, we didn't have...